We're not ready for before. We'll remove that during the approval. So.
The time of seven o'clock is here. I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand to request the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice.
And next agenda item is to establish court. Um, agenda item number four and approval of the agenda. Is there any change of sequence or removal of items?
We will be removing uh nine for the abandoned instructor hiring. Yeah, did you receive those materials for the? The other position for Mr. Shulman?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, yeah, removal of nine for abandoned instructor.
Okay, which sounds great. Um, so our next order of business number five is reorganization of the board of education. The first um thing is to um elect a president. Nominations are now in order for the office of the president.
I'll make Marianne.
I have to ask myself if I accept the nomination. Yes, I do. Um, Marianne Licker is nominated for the office of president. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations for the office of president are closed. Um, call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Marianne as president.
That's okay.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Marianne Licker as president. All in favor? Um, opposed? Next is our election of vice president. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. I nominate Nate Bowden. Nate, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, sir.
Nate Bowden has nominated for the office um vice president. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations are hereby closed. I'd like to call for a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Nate Bowden as uh vice president?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. I would see uh nominations are now open for the office of clerk. I nominate Julie Stroud. Julie, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Julie Stroud is nominated for the office of president.
No.
I'm sorry, for the president, I'm reading my, I don't accept that. Okay, I'm sorry. I've got my cheat sheet here. Um, okay. So Julie Stroud is nominated for the office of clerk. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? The nominations are closed. I call for a motion.
Make a motion for Julie Stroud to be uh.
I'll second.
Um, I will. Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, next nominations are open for the office of treasurer.
I nominate Chris Wisland for treasurer.
Chris Wisland, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to nominate um Chris Wisland for treasurer.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? Um, opposed, motion carried. Next, we're going to appoint the W A S B representative. And we don't need to go through all the rigmarole for this. Um, we can just entertain a motion. Since it's an appointment.
Make a motion to appoint Rick Winters as W A S B representative.
Is there a second?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. F, item F, appoint the CISA V representative. The CISA V representative is currently Rick Winters.
I recommend to appoint Rick Winters again as the CISA V representative. You, you get to me too.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Rick Winters as the CISA V representative. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. The last item under reorganization is to establish the days and the times of the school board meeting. Traditionally, we have met on Monday, the second Monday of the month. Traditionally, we have met at seven P M. Any changes to that?
Discussion?
Yes, open to discussion.
So I, I would suggest six o'clock P M. They're with the same dates. It just does, it just seems that it means it kind of then a little longer. That works out for everybody. I'm not sure if it works out for everyone.
What name? Rick, Julie, what she said.
My work.
How about you, Julie?
Yeah, I, I can do, I, I would need, I struggled to get here early in this day. But I can do something.
Well, it would also be an excuse to get out of the office.
I know.
So, I kind of, um, I would entertain a motion to set the dates and times of the regular monthly school board meeting.
And I'll, I'll make that motion uh to set, set dates and times for the school board meeting is the second Monday of the month at six P M. The exception of changing the meeting dates and or times when deemed necessary.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the monthly, regular monthly school board meeting on the second Monday of the month at six P M. With the exception of changing the meeting date time when it's deemed necessary. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. So, we're officially reorganized in the same, almost the same manner as before, so. We would start at six P M in.
June.
Yep. Okay.
Can I clarify something? Our annual meeting, is it six o'clock? For our next meeting and then our regular board meeting was after that? Is that still okay?
Well, we have the ability to um change the time when deemed necessary.
Okay, okay. So we'll keep the annual meeting at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, so.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up here.
Thanks, yeah. Okay, um, agenda item number six is announcements. Um, and um, would like to just acknowledge that um this is the first time the board has met since we lost a student. It's been a very difficult time for a lot of people. I'd really like to commend all of the staff for supporting our students. It's not been a long time and I I, I need to bring, well, yeah, we're all, most of us are wearing blue. And I'd like to suggest we have a moment of silence. Let's see if I have a, maybe the rest are in case and obviously. Jason, are there any instances? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, which is celebrations.
So I would like to have uh those of you that are here for the academic acknowledgement, would you mind standing? Dr. Watson, I'm in the kitchen. So I'm gonna read. Obviously, many of these young individuals are involved in other activities, so we have a portion of the students there. We're gonna read through all the names. I'm gonna read you the Panther Pride word, so um we have folks, do we have any wrestlers, no wrestlers that are here that made it, but we had individuals from the boys' basketball team, the girls' basketball team, and the wrestling team that made academic all-state recognition, so Eric, Mark and I had nominated them all for the pride award.
Could you describe a little more for the audience what the W A S B academic board is about?
Yeah, so these are actually specifically through the professional ones. So ours is the W B C A for the basketball team, uh, Wisconsin Basketball Coaches Association. Um, for the wrestlers, it would be through the State Wrestling Association. They set a parameter for minimum requirements for GPA for students and it's the thing that's impressive, and actually I can't speak for the wrestling, but maybe a former wrestling coach may be able to. It's cumulative GPA, which makes it even more impressive, is that's for your total through your high school career, so it's not a semester. So for our seniors, it would be, you have to have above the, the GPA requirement for all of your high school career. Um, the uh, the boys, you know, I can't speak to the boys' GPA, but the girls' basketball team GPA, no, just saying I don't know it because I wasn't a coach, was a three point eight eight cumulative GPA. That was for the ten players on the basketball roster, so. And then the top three teams in the state in each division get team acknowledgement. They get a plaque for their school, but we ended up fourth. Um, as a girls' team, there were three schools in front of us for the state recognition, but it doesn't take away from, from what all these individuals did as far as bringing that individual uh acknowledgement. So I'm gonna read right from the nomination here, kids. Um, Pittsville has a long history of both academic and athletic excellence. These student athletes exemplify those characteristics in that they excel on the mat, the court, and in the classroom. All of these individuals are in academic all-state in their respective sports, and we are proud as their coaches to nominate them for the Panther Pride Award as they truly bring pride to Pittsville. So I'm going to hand certificates as I call your name off to Dr. Watson, you'll hand them out. I will keep once, Alana Ballard, Riley Lupke, Brad Neve earned it in wrestling, Natasha Lashewski.
There's um, there's a pin there too. There's a pin.
Oh, thank you. Panther pin, these are new. I don't press his Panther. Brooke Grossman. Emma Holden. Nate, you wanna take hers? Dalton Dar. Rick Stram. Red Friday. Aiden Federals. Jackson Doer. Autumn Daniel. Wen Kong. Ava Jones. Kaylee Jankerson. Dawson Luther. And Matthew Gudell. Did you get a photo already?
Hold on, hold on, really.
Hold your pins up to him.
Congratulations then.
So our other celebration, Dr. Watson?
Yeah, we uh, at this end year, we're celebrating for students we have entered the military. I can say we have several that are considering it, but we have one young man who's already signed his contract and is going to be a U S Marine, so I want to recognize this time. Tom, you wanted to, you wanted to set sure about what his career is gonna be?
Yeah, please.
So what are you gonna do for the Marines?
So I'm signing up to be a combat engineer in the Marines. I'm on duty July twenty-second. And I'm going down to San Diego for uh basic training and then then I'll get a station at my job training and then we'll go from there.
Well, we're really proud of you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy, guys. I know you have homework. It's like. Talon moves to push-ups. Okay, that's it for celebrations.
Okay, that's a first celebration. It's a bunch of celebrations. Okay. Um, item number eight is our student representative update. Katie, you are on.
Unfortunately, no Brad today, he was busy keeping Pixel undefeated, so it is very. So here we've got the senior trip. This is one of my favorite pictures from it. You can see Tal and Jake having a whale of a time on the roller coaster. We went to Six Flags, Ray and Mara, Ray and Mara. Eighteen seniors attended and it was great weather, really hot, got a little sunburn, but couldn't complain. As far as birthday went, we had a community cleanup all across the city, cemeteries, the parks, houses, et cetera. And uh, we did some recreation at both the county park, lots of games, lots of fun. Got to hang out with your classmates and because it's standard gear, it's nice to be able to have that kind of experience. Once again, great weather, just overall great day. So as far as upcoming events go, prom is this weekend, of course. Graduation coming up quick, really quick. We've got interview activities planned. I know Student Kelsey's looking on that. And I already touched on that with the last meeting, nothing's quite changed. As far as the future student representatives go, I know you're discussing this later tonight, but there are two soon-to-be seniors who are interested in doing it. I'm sure a lot of you know who they are because they're very unknown, but uh, Katie, Toby, and Emma Bowden are both interested in doing this, so don't make a great. That's it. Any questions?
Well, um, first of all, um, what, what did you learn this year being the student rep?
I actually got to learn quite a bit just about how the process works in the school board, a lot of the bureaucracy, a lot of the, what you guys actually do and uh it takes a lot, it, it's work and it's, I appreciate it because you guys, you put in time. You have to take time out of your day, on your schedule to do this type of stuff, so being able to be here and observe that is, who'd say?
So you think you ever want to be a school board member?
Not sure if I'd go quite that far, but. Something I could do.
Okay, Katie, and what are you doing in future? What's your next one?
Right now, I'll be going to I O S C for aerospace engineering, beginning of this year. So that's the plan for now. Probably not that'll stick through it. Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a little token for you. Um, if you would come forward, please. Um, we're presenting this to Katie Fox, got a smile for the camera, Katie, okay? Uh, as student representative to the school board of the Pittsville School District, August twenty twenty-three to May of twenty-twenty-four. Thank you for being an outstanding ambassador for the students at K H S. And the sentiment on the bottom, the leader who is forever in the learning mode is the one most likely to succeed. So smiles for the camera down. Um, we are down to item number nine, consent agenda items. A, meeting notice certification. B, regular and closed session minutes of April eighth. C, special meeting and closed session minutes of April twenty-sixth, financial status, um, all of the fund balances as well as monthly expenses alone. Item E, hirings. Um, first would be four-year-old kindergarten teacher. Uh, grade four and five, the L A teacher, and then a reading specialist. Any questions about the consent agenda?
I just have one question. The, the two, um, the two positions, they, it's shared in the letter, like their, their background, like where they were from. The one that got added today, um, the reading specialist.
Yeah.
And, and she taught somewhere before.
Nielsville, Crystal Road. She's a Nielsville grad and has taught in Nielsville.
Okay, thanks.
And her mom was a longtime educator in Nielsville School District, in Scranton.
Great, I just, I just was wondering. I mean, it looked like she had some history, but it didn't give her in the letter, so thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion or questions? Item N, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Item number ten, information-only item. Jason, our district administrators report.
Yeah, I'm gonna cover a few items here tonight, so. So our facilities and capital improvements committee met um last month. We had our initial meeting. Uh, I thought it was a very productive meeting. We have a very diverse group, um, very uh in-depth. We, we have a bunch of people that bring various skill sets to the discussion from outside of the, you know, the school district lens. Uh, we had staff, we had parents, we had some people that filled dual roles. We came up with the uh, out of that meeting with setting a goal, what we actually did is we used the goal that's from our strategic plan related to the facilities. It made sense and then submitted, um you'll see below six steps that we plan to um tackle as that group. Number one was to review and update our ten-year plan. Um, many of you were there and are bored and admitting. Um, and we have one representative from City Game, Will Keys out here, that went on a tour of the facilities uh before the board meeting tonight, just to kind of get a feel for um some of the things we had talked about during that uh facilities meeting. As Pam indicated in the meeting, the, this is required to have this plan by the D P I in order to expend Fund forty-six dollars. It has to be in the ten-year plan when you're spending uh things, so it's important that we review and update this plan. So our goals are to review and update, to prioritize items on that ten-year plan. What we're gonna do for the next meeting is everybody's gonna come with a list of like, these are our top ten to that next meeting and have a discussion and see how many similarities there are as far as what we would prioritize. There are some things that actually already kind of inserted in top, you heard Dan Giles mention tonight. The rooftop units at high school are ahead of life. Those things kind of by default rise to the top of that, that list. Um, we're gonna complete some return on investment studies. That was something that our community members that came from the business community brought as an idea as far as um looking at investments that we're gonna save us money on the long-term, like sustainable type events. Uh, utilize grant and other funding sources. We already actually, uh, Dan has met with the Focus on Energy folks, who there is a three hundred thousand dollar grant potentially available for LED lighting, which could allow us to update the remainder of the district potentially with the LED lighting. Um, utilize our community experts and partners. I think we did that with the committee, but we're gonna continue to branch out and network to bring in folks in the community who have um kind of that area of expertise as we proceed through some of these things. And then we're gonna complete some utility usage studies. As far as to find out, you know, it's one thing when you're doing these energy efficiency grants, but then monitoring like, are you actually, what, like, what is the savings? Uh, that you're hurting, how efficient are we being? We talked about like lighting in classrooms, do we have the occupancy? Sensors in classrooms where the lights go off, computer monitors, are they in the sleep mode? Uh, cause all those things add up in the district our size, um, you know, as far as savings in most capacities, because we're, we're a large campus and we have a lot of people on here. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth at six P M in the C T E conference room. And we will bring, be bringing those lists that individuals created and having a further discussion. Our hope is to have that list. It is a working document to have that list updated where we have a list of some priorities. Uh, Pam, refresh my memory, I haven't memorized our Fund forty-six balance approximately right now.
Hope three hundred and forty-five thousand.
About three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in Fund forty-six right now, which will be, once again, things have to be on this list and approved by the D P I if you're gonna utilize those dollars to tackle those projects. And there are two board members here, Marianne and Rick, were part of the meeting. I don't know if you guys want to share any thoughts on your take from the meeting?
I agree with you in your statement of the wide variety. I find a lot of the people from the community are super helpful in their knowledge. They understand a lot of things I don't understand and I really depend on them. It's really nice to have all who are here and participating. I should appreciate it.
Yeah, it's great to bring in that, that extra expertise from the community and it's really kind of amazing, all the talent we have.
Well, often we get caught when we're looking for within here, we get, we miss things and, and you get, you know, you get in a system where, where you're used to, this is the way things are. So I, I also appreciated that fresh look because they brought up things that we had not really thought of, um, and they, they, I think they're gonna continue to be valued. Same thing with the parent lens, where we have folks that are edu, two that are educators in other districts, but also parents in the district, so.
How many of you have showed up at these open meetings?
Uh, thirteen were at the first meeting. Yep, thirteen. And obviously, those are open meetings, um, that any community members can come. Those are posted meetings, so if anybody wants to come and sit and listen at those meetings, people are absolutely welcome to come in. We'll have to put chairs out, but they're one welcome to come. Okay. Act twenty, um, so for those not aware, there is litigation currently related to the implementation of Act twenty. Here's the Cliff Notes version, it doesn't change anything. So the litigation is about the funding piece. Um, so they allocated fifty million dollars to the rollout of this, and I will just let you know, as we've said before, that, that is not adequate for what is being asked of districts as far as the curriculum and the resources and the training, but it was something, um, I think you may or may not be aware, I think I put in my communication, we had applied, the training we're going to have staff trained in, which is required by July first twenty twenty-five is letters training. Well, the state had put out information, there was a grant available, and that recovered the cost of staff to be trained, so we then um, added this training for all of our four K eight staff because we felt, why not get everyone trained? Well, we got word last week, as I told the board, that we uh, we're on Pitts and Nielsway, we got zero dollars uh from that grant. So they pretty much started by saying, everybody's gonna get something, then it was, yeah, the districts that did it before get priority. So then as they were sending to people to the second level training or additional staff, they gave all of the dollars and it was not adequate funding. So the majority of the districts in the state that applied newly this year were refused and given zero dollars. So that doesn't eliminate the fact we still need to get staff trained. So we are, what we did is unfortunately had to pare it down to just the required staff. Um, I'll let Heather kind of talk about who those staff are that are required to get the training in your building.
Yeah, K three classroom teachers, reading specialists.
Uh, yeah. Uh, Miss Gavon, yeah, Courtney. Yeah, and, and we did want to send, uh, you know, like we wanted our four K staff to go, we wanted to get as many people through this as possible to be on the same page, but what we did is pared it down to the bare minimum now because we're gonna have to incur all the costs of the training, uh, which is approximately a thousand dollars per staff member, so. How many do we have going now, Pam?
We sent fifteen for the last one, so we can skip that one.
Sixteen, and that's our bare minimum, we're, we're required to have trained by, not including administrators in this, so Heather, um is, we have to have those folks trained by July of twenty-twenty-five, so the reality is why we're doing this now is because we're gonna start implementing some of this stuff now. Uh, and we need to get the training, so unfortunately, but it is what it is. We kind of, kind of come to expect when we went into that, we were cautiously optimistic, but we also have witnesses before with the mental health grant where we were a recipient and then they made it non-competitive and we got a quarter, less than a quarter. and then they made it non-competitive, and we got a quarter, less than a quarter what we got before, so. But we're, Fullstein had the litigation. They said, actually, the guidance they gave was just keep doing what you're doing. The litigation does not stop any of the requirements. It's just, they're litigating the ability. There were some appropriations that were done that were outside of the scope. The litigation is from the legislature against DPI that there was some appropriations that were done outside of the scope of the governor's office with the funding. So they just said, just keep doing what you're doing. You gotta roll it out, okay? So that's what we're doing. Heather, do you want to kind of talk about the, I kind of referenced the first one here. Anything else about letters and then the rest of the slides, kind of talking about the process, like where we're at now?
What is letters? I haven't heard before.
I don't know exactly what it stands for, but it's the training of the science of reading that includes the phonics, the fluency, and all the components together, and taught in isolation as well.
It's one of the, they have, they approve training through the state, and that is one qualifies for the training.
So as a team, we try to meet monthly during our release time, that's one of the Monday days. And we had a group of teachers that went to Auburndale with a passion of their curriculum resource. And then a couple other teachers started exploring. I think there's like four on the list that are good reading readers. And so we did a virtual meeting with a representative from Bookworms, and the teachers were very interested in exploring it more. It was very interactive. It provides real books for children, and then it teaches all the components together. So like right now, we use Lucy Hawkins, which I feel is a very good resource for reading and writing workshop, but it doesn't teach the specific components of, you know, the phonics and the fluency. So putting together, we have the reading component, our writing component, component two of the Bookworms. And so we're just interested in exploring that more. So that's kind of where we're at. And then Wednesday, Jody Moore, Joan Barricks, and I will be attending the CISA5 vendor workshop that will give us a lot more information on different resources.
And to clarify something, I should have clarified this on the lawsuit. Why we're covered either way? The lawsuit is related to, they changed the requirement from those four required resources to saying that the funding would go to districts for any literacy program if they can check some boxes. So the lawsuit is saying, no, we're sticking to the ones that were approved, and we're not going to allow the leeway of districts to come up with the, you know, an alternative type component that would be, so that's why we're, if we're moving with one of the approved ones, we're going to be covered no matter what the determination of the lawsuit is. Are there any questions on, what are we doing, Deb? You got me waiting. I got a little flustered.
We're back at it.
So May 15th is the vendor fair, as Heather said, so we'll have a, I'm anticipating coming up here in June or July that we'll probably have some determination about which direction we're going to go, so that we can look at, look at resources.
Like I said, the readers and writers workshop format is very good instructional practices. They're just missing the piece of the phonics and stuff that are not included. So teachers have to find their own spelling resources and vocabulary resources. So we're still using a good resource. We just are looking for one that encompasses all of those components.
Kind of a holistic approach, Heather. I like what we've talked before, good practice, right? Okay, any questions from the board? So Heather, you're supposed to ask.
If there's no questions, Jason, why don't you continue with the referendum?
So I put some slides together because I thought this was, you know, it's time to start getting into the day. Like we've talked about means, but when I started going through some of the data here with our neighbors, compared to data with our neighbors, it was pretty stark what came about. And I started putting some slides together that could be utilized also for informational purposes. We'll get this stuff uploaded on the website regardless of if the board decides whether or not to, you know, to discuss a referendum question. So this is a chart here that kind of shows what we lost to inflation with our student funding. So, and this is from what we eat going forward. So it keeps, the gap keeps widening here, and it's hard when things are costing more and less money is coming in. So this is a good visual, okay? So this is where the information I put together here with our neighbors. So what I tried to do is, you know, some would think, well, do bordering districts. Like the Cedar, we border the Cedar, but we don't move students to the Cedar. That's just a reality. But same thing with, I believe, Granton. But I consider these to be our neighbors, our geographic neighbors and districts that we compare to. So what you're looking at here is the per student revenue limit. If you talk about those revenue limits, they vary from district to district. So you see us in the purple at $11,091. Now, Port Edwards, who just passed an operational referendum, this number does not include their numbers outside of the limits that they were approved through their operational referendum. So that number's going to increase. They passed, it was $800,000 a year. Pam, does that sound right to you?
I don't recall.
I believe it's $800,000 a year, so you would, you would end up, that's above and beyond this to above that they can levy.
Okay, was that a recurring?
That is a recurring.
It's a non-recurring. I think it's a $35,000, I think, for four years.
Four years, four or five years. So it is a non-recurring referendum, but $800,000 a year flat for each of those years. So that would be added on to this. So honestly, Pam's better at numbers than I am, but that's going to go up probably several thousand dollars, I would guess, that per pupil would go with, when you divide the per pupil by the $800,000. I don't know their exact enrollment, it's on the other side. So Nacoussin, second at 13, 674 Rapids, Marshfield, there's us, and then Auburndale below us. So that, if you see over on the right there, so we're in the bottom 32% in the state, bottom third for what we're given per pupil. So that's apples to apples. Like if, you know, you look at a district and say, you know, the districts that have more kids, they get more money, but this is per pupil. So if you were to, if Rapids had this, they would multiply times their number of students. So this is a good comparison, but our rank was 286 out of 421 as far as, you know, districts as far as spending per pupil, what we're allowed to levy.
So I just have one question, which maybe you're getting to it in other slides, so if you are, just tell me.
Yep.
Why are they different? Are they different because they passed a referendum, or is it because of?
It's a great question. You know, I was going to get to it. Thank you for asking that. So back in 1992, they set per pupil revenue limits. And I think I've kind of referenced this before, is that if you were a frugal district that was.
So we were tight when they capped.
And they lock you in, and they made some small adjustments through the years, but the idea was those districts that were more frugal and more spend-wise were locked in at a lower rate. If you were a district that was spending more money, because they said, well, if you're spending that much money, let's date it, right? Now, I doubt if the conversation was that simple, but that's how it works. So yeah, that's why they're different. The reason is, is that they locked them in based upon those levels in 1992. And Pam, I don't know the number if it's in 2014 and it's on adjustments, I believe it was.
They've made inside revenue limit adjustments often since 2009 fiscal year, but.
But it stays apples to apples. Like they don't say like, hey, Pittsburgh, we're going to bring you closer. It's when they do it.
They make everybody do something.
For like this last year, we're actually at $11,000, not, I don't know, where the $91 comes from. We're at $11,000 in some districts who are allowed to add, remember the $325? Some were allowed to add it, some weren't. Some got up to that full $11,000, which we were able to. So they, they have the ability every two years to change the way they fund it. So that's just a kind of, that varies every two years. We have no control over it.
That's what we've talked about. It's important when we hear is if we get the money outside the revenue limits. Otherwise, it doesn't mean as much to us. So this one, what I did here is wrote this down to say, this is per student. So this would be, if you look at Marshfield, Rapids, Nacoussin, and Port Edwards in the greens on the far right, if they had our, or excuse me, if we had their per pupil funding, that's what we would have an additional revenue each year for all those years. So if we had Marshfield's per pupil, it would be an initial $324,896. Yep, if we had Port Edwards, right, this is how the numbers work as far as the additional revenues. It's, and that's the projected enrollment of 568, which was our projected enrollment, so, our enrollment. So this, to me, was one that just kind of sticks out to you to say, we're below average, you know, Auburndale. I had kind of joked with Kevin when I was putting this together, when I saw that tracking. And I said, Kevin, from Auburndale, I'll share this with you because this is also something, you just changed the colors of the slide, and your Auburndells are kind of the same old as us with comparing this, but. That, like to me, this was the slide that kind of just really makes you go, wow, when you go through these numbers. And these numbers are all pulled directly from the DPI prior year. This current year stuff is not out, but these were pulled from, directed from DPI's database. Okay? Go ahead, you have a question?
No, I was just looking, questions, everybody's still, okay?
So I'm going to have Pam, even though I did my rudimentary definition of mil rate, what the mil rate is. I think they're all pretty much where, so this was by mil rate. And as you can see, we're second, or Pam, ours is up slightly, right?
Ours is going to be up, well, very preliminary projections right now. If we made absolutely no changes whatsoever, we would be at about an increase 50 to 75 cents on that just because our property values went up so much. Our property values increased 26% last year, so that will negatively tertiary to beat us for this coming school year.
We would still be.
Final numbers, I believe, still working on, you know, a more solid projection, but because those, most people went up 13% in the state, we doubled that because of that TIP property that went on. TIP, TIP property that went off.
Okay.
So that will affect us this next year, because it looks like we're property rich.
For one year.
Well, for one year, and it should, it'll level out again. But I think it's important to look at, and I haven't, nothing against Jason's numbers at all here. I haven't fact-checked this, but 518 is real. And we were at about, at our referendum, when we were doing our projections for referendums, we were at about an 8.6, right, you know, for this year. So the fact that we are down from where we projected when we made the referendum for this building is phenomenal. But it's always hard to go up.
And as you know, you should be fact-checking the DPI because it's, if you're, if you're.
It may not actually be revenue limit. It may be revenue per student. I don't know that it's revenue limit per student. I think it's revenue per student, which those numbers would be accurate to that. I think that's probably what the longitudinal data is for.
So once again, as you see compared to our neighboring districts. So for us, we're the bottom 15% right now in the state for mil rate. And that'll go up slightly, as Pam said, but it still would keep, I mean, the whole Auburndale. So 350 and a 420 in total, school districts in the state. Okay? So this was something I put together, just kind of talked about what do you look for potentially in this, in an operational referendum? Is, you know, your programming, your staffing, and then your maintenance, your infrastructure. So this is just a, I put this in here just for a visual. So, you know, I'm going to give you an update on the curriculum review committee that we put together. We're kind of taking a look. You know we're doing ELA right now because we're required by Act 20, but we're also in the process, we're constantly looking and evaluating resources. Well, that costs money. And what a lot of districts do is they actually budget a, you know, an item. Departments are in review cycles, and there's money budgeted for those that are in review cycle. So something we could look at for our programming is being able to maintain. The key for me is maintain and expand our program and our resources to kind of, as we're going through this processes, because as we're reviewing curriculum, it's all great. And we're going to, we'll go through and groups may come up with, well, this is something we'd like to explore. Well, a lot of this stuff costs money. And the reality is, we can sit and talk, and we can talk about all these resources if we don't have the funds to bring in additional resources. Now, I will qualify that by saying it's not always about money, meaning that some of the times, things we're doing already are effective, and we just need to supplement. But sometimes, you know, the Bridges resource that we brought in for our MAP program, which by and large, we're hearing nothing but positive feedback from staff on that, that was a significant cost that we had to just build into the budget. And when you're working with finite dollars, when we're talking, you know, $50,000 for a resource, that's a lot of money to allocate. The other one would be competitive compensation. I've shared before that our staff geographically, 43 out of 44 geographically for average teacher salary. Now, that does not, before Pam says it, I can say that does not take account benefits, but it's not just taking salary numbers. You know, we know we need to stay competitive regionally with our other districts to keep staff, and we want our folks, my semi-disposition personality will go so far for keeping people here eventually. You know, you have food on the table, so people want to get paid. But this would be to talk about, you know, not just staying with our model that we came up with, also trying to move people up, because it's a moving target, because other districts are also moving. So if you're, if you shoot for average, you're going to be below average, because everybody else is moving up. So we have great staff here. We want to be able to do a market-based payroll, kind of get some data as far as what we're looking at regionally here and stuff. And we have a kind of a plan that is in the preliminary stages about that. And then our capital projects, those types of maintenance, looking at infrastructure needs, which is part of this committee now that we're talking with our 10-year plan. So I just threw those, like the Windows HVAC, I just threw some examples of what that might look like in there. So this would be a vision of what potentially, you know, if the board were to move in that direction, that we would lay out, we would start doing the groundwork of projecting some of these numbers. Because the one thing is, this wouldn't be us just saying, hey, you know what? We're thinking $600,000 a year. We need to be very strategic about communicating, these are our needs. Here's why we need these things. And then that would be something we would bring to the board for you to make a decision. We didn't, as we said a couple meetings ago, we weren't going to move forward with any expenditures, meaning for any consulting or anything, until we get consent from the board to do so. And we've stuck to that. That was why Jason did his slideshow, because I didn't charge us anything to do other than my normal salary. So that's kind of where we're at. I'll take it. You know, any questions you may have?
Are you still thinking or hoping and planning to align whatever decision we make to be on the ballot at a presidential election, November timeline?
Yep, 70 days. You have to work backwards, 70 days. So the board would have to make a decision by the July meeting if we were going to do a question about. But yes, Julie, for those reasons, and I know some of you went to the presentations at Wasby, where the pass rate for presidential elections, because there's a high turnout, and I've said before, I'm all about open transparency and.
It's not even just about it, having a higher likelihood to pass. It's a higher likelihood to have the most residents.
Yes.
Give feedback, which this is a topic that our community needs to tell us what they want to do.
And that is, that's absolutely why I wanted on the November ballot if the board were to choose to do it.
Okay, thank you.
When do we still have time in August? Pam, I thought we worked backwards to.
Well, we, no, because August meeting would be, you'd have to, your meeting by the 3rd of August.
And ours is the 2nd.
Or something like that. I can't remember the exact dates.
Hit this back on me. Because I didn't remember the deadlines. So, you know, the struggle where we're at right now, just to be honest with you, like we said, we weren't going to expend any money for any consultees without, we can do so many things here, but we need to start digging into some stuff. If the board wants us to bring some more like concrete data back and start working some of these numbers out, we'd need to reach out to CISA, is one that, they gave us a proposal for going through the process. And that would include, if, that would include all the way through a referendum to the process with CISA. They would carry it all the way through what they're proposing, so. Because we want to give the board data to make an informed decision. And to Julie's point, absolutely, I want this to be fully transparent. It's all about communicating, and there's no incognito referendums. This is about bringing forward our needs. And the way I look at it as a referendumist is if people are happy with the product, you know, with what we're doing, and you put the case together of why we need to do it, I think you'll take it to the ballot.
Right, you share the great data of a little bit that you just shared with us, which shows we're fiscally responsible, shows what we've done in being fiscally responsible. And it's also the situation we're at, so if we don't want to change, we only want to enhance, we need to get ourselves back in alignment with where other districts are. And this is what it takes to do that. And is that what, so I think that you share a really great case of how we have been very responsible with that money. And this is why we're asking. And then, again, it's why we're asking, because the community needs to decide, is this what we're going to do? Or do we take other actions and choices?
And we played devil's advocate, Julie, on that point. You know, us being the only school that exceeded expectations on the report cards, you might have folks saying, well, wait a minute. And the reality is, we have great staff here. We're doing really good things. But it's getting tighter and tighter. The budget's getting tighter and tighter. We're going to be, next year, our FTS will be what they were in 2020?
I.
So, so we are gonna increase FTS, we're gonna be back to our original, it was either two thousand and twenty or twenty-one, we're gonna be back to the same number of FTS then, so. What, what's happening is, it's just, you know, with inflation, costs are increasing, so we're proud of what we're doing, but to keep doing this, it's gonna, it's getting to the point now where you're gonna have to look at. We're, we're gonna not be able to do some things we're doing. But we will never threaten our community with saying, well, we're gonna have to cut this or that, the reality is, we're gonna keep doing what we're doing, but it's getting more and more difficult. Number one, to compensate staff competitively, to get these resources and do these things, so I, I agree with you, Julie, I think we, we got a pretty good case, but.
And I, I think that can be a devil's advocate, but I also think that it can even be a stronger case for. Why the message that's being shared is grounded with such, like, like just the responsibility that the district has had. And being crugal with money and doing good things. Um, and now you can try, like, we're coming back and saying, this is the real story, and in order for some of these things to continue, this is what support we might need. But we didn't ask for it, and we still did really great work when maybe we could have, but we didn't need to, so we waited. I mean, I, I think it can be, um, but I also think it can be a really strong, um, case in the great work that's happened. So, um, one of the, the questions I have, um, for Jason, but also really for all of us on the board, because this is, this is supposed to be a discussion. Um, what information should we be sharing with the community now, and in what formats? Um, because, you know, if, if, if we're going to be fully transparent, uh, uh, I believe we need to start sharing information now. And while I think that your, um, the weekly column that you do. Has, has real value, I think we need, you need to look at multiple channels. You know, you can't just figure that everybody reads your column, all parents read your parent thing, and everybody in the community reads the kids' record, probably like what they do. But.
So I agree.
And Jason, I would like to hear from some of the board members.
Well, I wanna make one comment, is that one of the reasons I have purposely been holding off from any communications is that I didn't wanna go out and start communicating before the board gave direction about, like, that would be disingenuous. So I sent that one out. Two months ago, where I just kind of filled in folks on that, like, I would have no problem with sending out these slides, because this is data, regardless, we're going to a referendum, like, sending this out. But I just wanted to say that is, I have no problem with that, I'm ready to rock and roll and communicate, but I don't want to do any of that until I have some direction from the school board.
Yeah, and I disagree with that.
Good.
So really, the question is, moving forward, how do we want to share this? What do we want to share with the community, and how do we want to share it? Because I, I don't think we get tons of people watching our meetings either. So, I mean, that, that's one method, but, um, what, so I guess it's a two-part question, and, and I'd really would like to hear what other. Board members say. Um, you know, what, what should we be sharing and how should we be sharing it?
I think as much as we can share, better, I mean, what we've shared tonight is available to the public, but it's, the truth is that. Maybe more could have the opportunity to, you know, obtain this information through other meetings also, um, such as the kids' record. I don't know.
Could, could we do these slides and put them up on some phone cord board and have it at the library? You know, I, I mean, I'm thinking about different venues like that, where people go.
Well, and if you did that, then you could go borrow those and take it to Alliance Club meeting.
Absolutely.
Like, so then they could travel with you to be really good visuals.
Yeah, that'll seem, and if you're making the case for, what are we making the case for, I mean, we really?
Well, I don't know if we're ready yet.
That's what I mean, that's, so, I don't, who, I thought the information you put out is that, you know, we have tough financial decisions coming up, and. Referendums are not a solution to those decisions. Because otherwise, if you start talking about now, then you're going to be voting in a referendum for the unit of society for your card.
Correct.
I mean, if you do like a full card, that lets me, this is no secret, this is all over, it's posted, this is all over, anyone can watch this, you know, I mean, I'm sure my mom's watching, but. And to your point, one of the recommendations from, from the consulting firms is, you actually don't wanna start promoting too soon because you get. More or less, it kind of dulls people to it, is that it's very strategic about when you start getting into details, you lay the case for, you know, what you're doing, and that there's financial constraints, but actually getting into the details.
Well, because we only have one part of the story. What we have, what you shared today is the data in why. We're feeling a financial strain, right? So you're sharing where we line in relationship. What we don't have concrete is why do we need more money? So what is it, like, you've gotten three buckets, but what in those buckets are we actually asking the community to fund? And I think that it would be premature to be putting more than. We're discussing all of this until we actually know what it is that we want, like, if we go that direction. Um, what it is that their vote would pay for, right? So that is a critical.
And the cost, you know.
Yeah.
What is it?
That's, that's a fine line for most, everyone's.
I think using the, using the tools that we have, the record, is, you know, they show us, you want to help. And letting, if you let people know that we're discussing the points like this, not the details, then everyone in this community is welcome to come here and, and, so, I don't know. Until we decide if you want to do it, I don't know that we would see that everybody's, you know, or, or, or not, because that's what we're here for. So when we asked about a survey, uh, Pam, you remember what they told us about a survey?
A survey wasn't going to do us any good because.
It's not a want, it's a need.
It's a need, right, I don't know.
They said, don't survey, I mean, you know it's a need, but.
Yeah.
But you just simply make your case.
May I share my vision of the annual meeting? This might clear up some of the questions, so if I can get my budgets from the rest of my supervisors, my goal is to try and get budget one done. The way, you know, with everything that we have set now, with the ten percent decrease in, um, classrooms and building and area budgets. Then budget two, which whilst we presented the annual meeting, will be that ten percent add back. And then at that point, I'm hoping, um, I can work with my PNA people who, who work for us for free, because we have our loans and our GOBs through them. Um, and then look at it and say, okay, what do we need to get our fund balance up to being healthy? What do we need to increase our salary lane schedule, that's where we wanna go, you know, we need to kind of. You can't do everything all in the first year, we're gonna need to look at, these are the things we need to get done over the next four years if we go to referendum.
Right.
And then, you know, look at those items and then add those in, what we can for this coming year into budget two. And then that would give us a good look at saying, you know, these, you know, we've made cuts, we've done this, we've tried to analyze the budgets, and now here's budget two. This is what it could look like, and then this is what would change. We would add our curriculum committees, uh, change our salary now, things like that. So that's sort of my vision for, for the annual meeting, so then at that point, we think, whether we need a special meeting after the factor, you know, a few weeks after, to kind of look at it and let them decide. You know, what pots are we going to put it in, you know, over the four years, and then maybe at that point, then in July. Have more concrete information to come to the board meeting and say, these are our goals if we go to a referendum, this is how the money we think should be spent, this is how much we need. This is the impact on the mill rate, it's just way too early to do that, because I just don't have the information yet.
And I spoke to two, two district administrators, one, one who, who passed a referendum in the spring, and another that failed. And had conversations, very similar asks in the referendum, and they could not stress more that you need to let the community know where the money was going, which pots.
Or access.
Can lay out, that, that was like, if, they said that one takeaway is that needs to happen, you need to over communicate, this is where it's going, this is why. You know, and demonstrate this is why we have a need in those areas. And so there were good, good conversations with both of them, just to kind of talk through, um.
If, excuse me, if we do bring in a communication consultant, like Jason mentioned, or someone we have spoke to, or gotten some ideas from, that person could come and speak to the board and say, these are your bullet points. And here are your presentation materials, you know, that's sort of a part of what they do, that we can be paying them for. Versus us trying to create a, some fact checker, do all of that, because they would be, you know, they're the communication people, that's what we would be able to do. They would do the flyers, they would do the postcards, they would, you know, help us go to fourteen different municipalities. Or have listening sessions or something, so that everyone would know. Because we're not like some cities, you know, with one or two communities, we have fourteen.
So what does our community, if we're going to be transparent, what does our community need to know now?
Honestly, I, I think these charts right here, that, the, the graphs here, and. Kind of paint the picture for, it isn't about spending, it's about revenues and, and the inflation, and we're not able to keep up with what we're getting from the state, no. Um, we're a stable to slightly declining enrollment district, as are most districts in the state right now, and that's, the revenue is tied to students, the number of students. Now, even when your students are down, you still have to teach kids, so, you know, you lose ten students, doesn't mean you have one less teacher, it just means that you have ten less students, and. You know, over that three-year rolling average, you can have less money coming in. So I, I don't know, I would, I would open it up to Pam to share her thoughts, but to me, this is, you know, making the case, and just speaking, I, I worry sometimes you can overcomplicate things with the community. It's just laying out, like, those charts are pretty specific, where they lay out kind of like, wow, that's, that's significant when you talk about that difference, and then also promoting all the good things we're doing. In the district, that was another tip I got from a superintendent who passed a referendum, is just talk about all those great things going on in the district that we're doing, and. Another thing is, never, and, and you heard me say it earlier, and I would never do it, never threaten to cut.
Right.
That's not what you talked about in the referendum, this isn't about cutting, it's about, we're pretty proud of what we're doing, we want to continue to do it, and things are costing more, and we want to keep the people that we have, and keep doing great work.
So, can this be posted on our website? I mean, because this is good information, and like you say, I, you know, I. My, my question revolves around, or my concern revolves around keeping the community abreast of what we're seeing. And what's going to go into our decision-making. It's not selling a referendum at this point in time, it's rather, this is, yeah, informing. This is what, this is how we compare, this is how our revenues compare to other districts. It's just like saying, um, you know, this year's budget increased by, what was it, a half a percent?
Not even.
Point one four.
Point one four. It's, at that point, it's informing.
I think that we should, I think we could, um, if we labeled it something along the lines of future planning, keep the word referendum out of there. As far as in the title altogether, because the board has not made a resolution for that yet. Um, we can certainly discuss within that, the documentation that, you know, it's looking more like we're going to need one. But I don't think we would say referendum November two thousand and twenty-four, because it's not what it is yet without our resolution.
Right.
So on future planning, I think it's a great idea, pull up some of those slides we did. Two, three months ago as well, with some, you know, similar data, and put them out there, I think that would be a very good idea.
Pam, what do you think about this as an idea, I'm throwing this out to you guys just to discuss. Pam and I worked together with these slides and some of the slides from the earlier budget presentation. We, we can put together something that we would then be able to put all out on the website, I might even have the board review it.
I think sharing the, the Wasco and DPI document, or, excuse me, the short video, was it maybe twenty minutes, that I shared with the board a couple of months ago?
Twenty minutes.
Was it like a twenty-minute one?
I don't think it was that long.
I, I don't think anyone's gonna watch it.
Oh, well, I, I know the board, yeah, so I don't know that long, I mean, they can skip ahead, because it's easy enough to scroll ahead, but.
I, I mean, I think there's some very helpful information. Give, give people visuals, and here I'm sharing my opinions. Um, but, but I, I, I think you're right to label something like this just financial status. You know, and, and what we're dealing with, with revenue, and we're, we're informing the community.
We'll, we'll put something together and share with the board. If that works.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I lost my place. Um, our agenda item number eleven, discussion action items. Uh, first item is to approve the student school board representatives for the coming school year. I would entertain a motion to appoint the two young ladies that expressed an interest.
And that with them, with the two of them last week, um, kind of talk about the role. Kayla and Brad did a wonderful job here, I'm excited about having them on this next year.
So we've got Kaylee and Emma. And. Can you share with us a little bit on why they were chosen?
Yeah, they were the only students interested, Chris, and also, um, the, you know, eight and other, it's what they did in life, I think, within the school board, or two, hopefully.
I think they did, but because they were the ones running it.
Yeah, we get pretty. So they've expressed that they're thinking involved in most of the things we do in our school, these two, and these two, I will say that they're so involved, that I think we should kind of one of them, be here in a time next year, because they get pulled all over the place. Um, that's, that's kind of the way it's, I know these gentlemen have decided to tag, you know, like they did last year too, but, um, the way it's written in the board policy, it really tends to have the one and the ultimate, as a big kind of. Yeah, they're the, the two that want to do it.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kaylee Jacobson and Emma Boden as the student school board representatives for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been unseconded. Um, I'm wondering, you have to confuse yourself, right, abstain, that's it. Um, I'll, uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve Kaylee Jacobson and Emma Boden to be, to be the school board representatives for next year, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With one extension. With, um, item B, the second reading and approval of updates to policy four forty-six, uh, student services. No, student searches.
You threw me for a little bit, I was going, I'm not.
Right, 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 student searches, but it says student services.
Really?
And I'm looking at the agenda, it should be student searches. Oh, okay, my, uh, mine one says student searches. Can I get one? Okay.
Disgusted.
Just, but it's student.
No changes from the previous.
Okay, anyway, there's no changes.
You were gonna add one word to add that in here?
Yeah, do you remember from notes what it was?
Was that this one, or was that one of the last?
Because we talked about it in the open session, right?
The, um. What was the change that was discussed?
Jason's just adding, like, the, again, not mandating that you would have to notify parents, but like, the, um. You were, you were adding two words to like soft language, like, just to soften it a little, and then it was gonna go over in the handbook. I just don't.
It was somewhere, just like first contact parents.
Yeah, I mean.
With not requiring parents, or something, somewhere in that section, I remember that discussion.
Yeah.
I think that was a different call.
Was that in the handbook?
No. It was this one.
I'm skimming it right now, I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Where'd you find the doubt?
The minutes say. This is what we're done to possibly add the wording with parental notification.
this is what we're done to possibly add the wording with parental notification.
Yeah, it was the word notify, it wasn't getting permission. It was, it was to add notifying. Um, and I think that you were gonna do some, like, you were gonna run it by legal to, like, bring back to us thoughts on that based on.
I gotta confess that, uh, I must have missed that piece, so.
Yeah, with the notification.
I, I missed that deal, because this was what, was, this was a WASB recommendation which is vetted for the legal component and I, and now it's coming back to me and I missed that. I was gonna run it by Tony, I need to make sure that we weren't going against what the, the legal advice would be as far as those searches, so I missed that.
So technically, can we table this and bring this back?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I would, um, entertain a motion to table this item until the June meeting. It's been moved and seconded to table item, um, eleven D until the June meeting. Any further discussion? Uh, then let's vote, all in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item C, open enrollment applications for the coming school year. Two attachments, resident out and resident in.
Okay, Kayla.
Thanks.
Any questions, you can go.
I'll make a motion to approve all residents and all non-resident open enrollment applications for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the enrollment out and resident in. Applications for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item D, lunch prices for the coming school year. Um, what is our, before we dig into the details on this, what is our food service balance approximately?
Right now, I just checked it as of, like, mint, it was thirty-four thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars.
What is an ideal balance that we want to have? I, we know, like, four years ago, we had three hundred and thirty thousand, now we have thirty-four.
CPI only allows about fifty thousand. For bigger school districts, they can have more, I mean, they don't want you to, they don't have a ton of money. And we, um, we have, if we had a hundred thousand dollars at the end of the school year, we would have to supply them with a lease plan to spend it down.
So when we had that huge balance, we were planning on a new cooler and a few other types of materials.
Right, so, yes, yeah. We made one of our per-time staff people full-time, that kind of thing. So I'm not gonna go through all of this because a lot of this is due to the year before and we've all had it a couple of years to review it. But, um, just to note that we haven't, um, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we raised our prices a nickel. Now, we have been exempt from having to increase our prices for a few years. Um, but we've, we've only increased it slightly. You can see it stayed the same from the seventeen, nineteen, eighteen school year all the way to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we have, um, bumped it up a nickel for all three price point rates in twenty-two, twenty-three, kept it the same in twenty-three, twenty-four. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, we are exempt again, we're not required to raise our prices. If we are ever mandated the way the law stands right now, so we could have a negative fund balance, um, next, you know, as of June, say. Um, but the following school year, we would be required to put our food pricing in. And then we could only have to increase a ten cents per price rate, the way the law stands right now. Um, the, so right now, we're at, um, two hundred, excuse me, two hundred and two dollars and eighty-six cents is our weighted average. So we would only be increased, uh, we'd have to increase our standard price to, to ninety-six as a weighted average. Which would be adding ten cents to every category, I did, they have a whole projection worksheet.
So what does it actually cost? What's the cost of a meal, the cost?
Oh, I did not ask Mr. Andres for what an actual cost of a meal is, but the federal rate right now for a reimbursable meal is three dollars, excuse me, for the weighted average, they say you should be able to do it for three dollars and eighty-five cents. So if that's your weighted average, that's sort of what they estimate rate point to be. It doesn't mean that, I mean, rural areas, foods can cost more than sometimes in other areas, so. So, given that we're exempt, I'm, I'm sort of on the fence about, should we just put the pricing the same for next year? We found out we are qualified, I don't remember what the acronym stands for, with the CEP program where everyone can eat free. Um, but then you're not reimbursed as much and we did the math on it and we would run about two hundred thousand dollar deficit every day. So even though it'd be awesome to offer everyone free meals, because we've got a lot of people that do, do like that, fund ten just can't fund the fund fifty to that extent. So we're gonna stay as a, a, a meal, we're at approximately forty-two percent free and reduced at elementary and about thirty-two percent at school at this point. So I am, this is, oh, sorry. You can scroll to the back where to go and read them, thanks. So, um, these are our options, just keep the pricing the same. We've noticed that our, our costs, or excuse me, our, our negative balances are decreasing both by the number of people with high balances and the dollar amount, so that's a good thing, people are starting to get caught up. Um, and as you recall, when we changed our policy not two months ago, we changed it to, we, you know, we may stop feeding. We, we haven't ever, I don't think, probably since two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, that we stopped feeding someone because they don't have money in their account. Um, we can increase ten cents on each and then more, we can increase five cents on each. Given that we have a fund balance of, right now anyway, of less than thirty-five thousand, I would suggest just to increase it to five cents. To try and keep that fund balance at that point, because as you see in my, um, don't scroll this a little bit for the, for me, please, yeah? Yeah, so, okay, keep going to where I got the facts, yeah. So food costs and supplies are going up about four point two percent. But we are also increasing the amount of lunches that we're serving for day, so that's a good thing. Um, our reimbursement rates for twenty-four, twenty-five aren't out yet, so they're gonna hopefully stay the same or go up slightly. They go up at all, I don't see them going up more than CPI. Um, and then with our fund balance being at less than thirty-five thousand, I would like us to increase it to five cents. And if you're uncomfortable with that, then just keep it at the zero. You're on the risk of gonna fund ten having to cover it.
Would you share with the board, and I think you just referenced it, the question I asked when Pam and I met about this last week? You know, when she had told me about what our current fund balance is, I said, what's worst case scenario if we just stay flat? For next year would be that we would increase costs, would, would cause us to run a deficit. We'd have to make up that difference out of the fund ten balance. So we felt that the nickel increase would give us some cushion and not really.
Will the nickel, will the nickel cover that we will not have to go and cover it from fund ten? I cannot guarantee that.
Some crazy for the other.
We don't know if, I mean, if our food count stays at the rate it's at, it could, I mean, if it goes down, it might not. I mean, or food prices could go up higher than we need to pay. So I mean, that's a very conservative with the numbers we have right now, we should be pretty close to staying between fifteen and a hundred thousand dollars. Which gives us a cushion, you know, for main, main bills.
Julie, may I answer your question, I think barring something unexpected that we couldn't account for? Like a huge drop in students taking lunches or some type of a situation? That would, that would keep our balance healthy but not excessive. If we increase it by a nickel, then next year might we have to increase it again?
Uh, we, we might not need to. I mean, if I was to increases, you know, the number we sell again increases nine thousand meals, we might not need to. We may be able to sustain a fund balance of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars and then that, I, you know, we wouldn't need to. We don't have to now, we're exempt from changing our lunch prices. The only lunch price we're required to increase is our meal costs.
Well, we don't wanna have a fund balance over fifty thousand, do we?
We don't wanna go over a hundred for sure.
We'll get that sweet spot.
Fifty thousand would be normal for our size.
You see, I, and, and maybe this is kind of incrementalism at work, but I'd almost rather increase something five cents this year versus having to increase ten cents next year.
That's what Jason and I discussed too, because then you end up with a negative fund balance.
Oh.
Yeah, we've had two years with no increases.
Yeah, if we go back to the top, we, we haven't increased, we've kept it the same for the last two years. And then prior to that, from twenty-two, twenty, from the twenty-two all the way down to the seventeen, nineteen, eighteen year.
So the district historically has been very sensitive to, you know, not increasing those prices and keeping that balance at a level that.
And you add locally sources, a lot of the food, so that really helps on the cost of products as well.
Again, the, the thing unknown is families completing the free and reduced application, which we just, yeah, it's their choice to do that.
Right, and we have it available, it goes out of the mail, it's available to anybody. Um, if any teacher or supervisor would come to Mr. Andres and tell him so-and-so's family is going through divorce or dad's in hospital.
Lost their job.
Lost their job, whatever it is, he very discreetly contacts them because he's legally really the only one that should be contacting them and asking them if he would like help in completing that application.
Pam, our freedom used to stay pretty, like, reasonably consistent or less.
It's, um, forty cents for a lunch.
But our percentage of students that.
Both, because elementary's going up. Yeah, elementary's going up, right, and our Title I money, um, our allocation did go up last year or the year before. So our, our free and reduced is going up, that's partly why we got that, um, community first.
Yeah, where we qualify, right?
The CCLC grant as well.
Yes.
You see, and it's wrong, the schools were also.
You know, at KSPS.
I didn't research it, so I'm not.
Yeah, I could, we could pull that up, it's, I mean, it's public data.
A few years ago when I researched it, we have some of the lowest prices around. So the fact that we have raised our prices, we're probably still some of the lowest odds around.
We're, we're, we're in, I would say, even, Chris was asking about the percentage of students free and reduced.
Oh.
And I would say, um.
In our area, I mean, um, I know, Nacusa has a very high free and reduced.
We see that creeping up, oh, year after year after year, it seems like they qual, more people qualify for free and reduced lunches.
And I'm not sure if it's so much more people are qualifying or they're just more aware of it.
And just filling out, filling out the application.
Right, and we don't food chain here, a lot of it's food chain. You know, you, you, you have a, you know, a different meal, we, we never do that.
Yeah, different meal. Same as your bag or something.
Right, and the screen that's up, that the person, you know, we always have like an attendant who verifies that the meal is reversible, but they say on their screen, they cannot see if it's free or reduced or paid child, they cannot see that. So it's, so it's no way that anybody knows about it other than an administrator or we're in a high of the state, yes.
Yeah. Or mailed. So, um, board discussion about either, I really, we have three options, no increase, five percent increase, ten percent increase.
Five cents.
Five cents. Geez, yes, okay.
I was more in favor of the slight increase, so we really minimize kind of the, 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 the.
Given the current conditions, it only makes sense.
It's not a guarantee, it's not a year, it won't happen, but it's.
This is a good chance.
And then you can reevaluate next year.
Julie, but.
I just don't like the idea of increase, increase, if that's what happens. Um, if we could make it by this year without an increase, yes, we may have bought another fund and then maybe we have to increase the dime next year. But to increase every year, um, I know as a parent, I, I wouldn't like that.
Well, we haven't increased for.
Ten years.
Two years has been the same since seventeen, eighteen.
Right, if you look at the ten years going back, the increase isn't that large over ten years.
I, I guess I take a slightly different approach to it. There is a system in place for people who need assistance and anyone who needs assistance that qualifies gets that assistance. Again, the reason I asked the question, I asked, which I really apologize because I should have sent it ahead of time, so I don't expect anyone to have the answer, is I actually would, I would actually say that I think someone should pay the cost of this to get the meal. Like, again, there is a state system in place for free and reduced lunch for, for students and families who need that support. If, if you're a student or a family that doesn't need that support, then I don't actually think the taxpayer should pay, unless that's something that we're actually wanting to put. So I actually tend to take the other side and just one comment is, I mean, my groceries keep going up all the time and so I don't think that, I mean, if we can minimize it and we don't believe we'll have to go into another fund, I also don't think that we need to be carrying a super healthy fund balance and overcharging people, right? So I think that that's a good thought, but, um, if, if we can raise it five cents and believe that we aren't gonna dip into that, I would support not doing the whole ten cents. But if it actually, if we think we're gonna actually have to dip into other funds if we don't upcharge ten cents, then I actually would recommend the ten cents. Because there, I would feel very different if there wasn't a system in place that if you couldn't afford it, that you were getting that help and support. But that's what that system's for, is to help with that. But that's, I mean, but I also will, like, I mean, I, I'm very amenable to.
I mean, to speak for Pam, and I think it's a good discussion, I, I think what we projected is, without those unknowns that we can't account for, a nickel will avoid this scenario or potentially having to dip into fund ten to cover it. And it'll soften, if we do end up reevaluating that we need to go another nickel next year, then we can evaluate, but I, I feel.
We shouldn't overcharge people.
Yeah.
Right, so I absolutely agree with you.
So when I look at the historical lunch pricing at the high school in school year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, it was three dollars and twenty cents. This year, it's three dollars and thirty cents. So if we increase by five cents next year, that will be a fifteen percent increase over nine, ten years. I'm sorry, cents, cents, in five hundred percent, over the course of, of really like nine or ten years.
I mean, it's the best grocery prices you've ever seen. Yeah, considering what is going on, we did a lot of food for three dollars.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and, you know, and I, I look at the grade school, if we increase by five cents, that means, that means that, right, it would be a quarter over the course of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years.
I'll make a motion to increase, um, the cost by five cents for next year. In each of the categories.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to increase lunch prices by a nickel for each category, starting with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Is there any further discussion?
Just wondering, why high school had died over the last ten years and the little kids twenty cents? Why double, why did, why do you think that was?
Um, it's the way the weighted average works because there's more students, I think, it just, it's dispersed over more people. So it took more to get it off, I believe, is why that occurred.
Any other questions or comments? Um, then let's vote, all in favor of the motion to increase the school board. All in favor of the motion to increase the school lunch by 5 cents for each grade level by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Was there an extension or...
No.
You voted aye, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so motion carried. Thank you, Pam, thank you for your work on this. Okay, um, yeah, I'll just change here. Next is a long-term and short-term disability insurance for the coming two school years.
So, again, this year, we're not having any increase in our long-term or short-term costs. And since I started in July of 2015, there's been no increases in costs. So, um, right now, long-term disability, the district pays one time's person's annual salary or hourly wage. And it is 74 cents per hundred dollars. So it's 0.0047 on every dollar. And far as the short-term disability, which is a supplemental or an ancillary insurance for the staff members, um, those prices did not increase at all either, those all stayed the same. But if this start at $70, we can go up to size to $231 a week. And then the cost for, um, the premium is $5.85 for $70 a week premium, um, and and $23.23 for someone who wants the $231 a week short-term disability policy. So I would recommend staying with this. We have obviously everyone on long-term disability, all of our staff members count. Our utilize it, and we have probably a little over 50% that take the short-term disability.
Rather amazing that there hasn't kind of increased.
Yeah, right, the only insurance that I've ever worked with that's that.
I make a motion to approve long-term, short-term disability insurance through passing national insurance with no rate increases locked in for school years 2024, 2025, and 25, 26.
Is there a second?
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the long-term, short-term disability insurance through Madison National Insurance with no rate increases for the next two school years. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, approving the teacher and support staff listing rules for 2024, 2025 as well as a long-term subcontract.
Any questions? There are no non-rules.
I only have one question. I don't know if it falls under this or will fall under G. Um, do we have anyone in the category? I know teachers, teachers are actually exempt, but in the support staff or the long-term subcontract, probably not. But is there anyone on those listings that is exempt, that's salaried?
Um, we pay no overtime on any of our salaried people, only our hourly people.
Correct, but is there anyone in the support staff category?
No one is exempt from overtime.
So only, only our teachers? Only our teachers are salaried and then our administrative contracts, correct?
Correct, and the long-term district subs contract. So they have a set number of days.
They can't go over a set number of hours, or they, they're no longer 3, 27 days.
Right.
3, 27.
So, the reason I ask this question is because DOL just passed all new rules for salaried employees. And teachers are still exempt. So the, the teachers don't fall into that. But I think, and I don't know if we've looked at it, um, and might not be relevant to today if we're actually not signing contracts.
They will be signed today, we have, they have to be on the 15th.
Okay, but do we have any administrative staff that fall under... So the new, the big change that happened with DOL, and again, I just did some research and saw that teachers are still exempt, so they're in a category that had, does not fall into the new rules that happened. Um, but all, effective July 1st, they are moving the, in order to be exempt, you, like, the threshold that used to always exist was 35,568 per year. It's effective July 1st, it's 43,888. And effective January 1st, it's 58,656. So in a sense, in six months, in order to be exempt, the threshold's going from 35,568 to 58,656. So the question is, besides teachers, do we have anyone salaried that's less than 58,656 because they actually can't be exempt?
We would, we would need to look at that, I mean, that's administrative contracts, those aren't coming today.
We're not presenting those today.
Oh, that's what I was...
No, I remember that, I remember $58,000.
So...
Administrative contracts.
There might be, I would have to look, I would have to, I, I can't remember. And then we have a couple that might be...
So this is support staff, long-term subs, and teachers.
Got it, no admin, no admin. Okay, got it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't signing anything that wasn't going to follow this new law.
Support staff, teachers.
Perfect, okay. Yep, and teachers are still exempt in that category. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the listing.
I make a motion to approve the teacher, support staff, and long-term contract substitute teacher in the 24, 25 school year.
I'll second it.
Yes, it's been moved and seconded to approve the listing of teachers, support staff, and long-term contract subs for the coming school year. Any other questions or comments? Then let's vote. All in favor of saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, um, approval of not having automatic rollover extension of administrative contracts for the 25, 26 school year.
So going over the timelines for the, the administration of the district, all of us are on two-year rollover contracts. So effectively, we're all under contract for next school year, just as the teachers, what we got through, they sign these contracts, return them. With the discussion about the fiscal uncertainty, um, if we, by June 30th didn't do anything, all administrators' contracts would roll over for another year into 25, 26. So I've met with all the administrators, and this includes myself, I've met with myself, uh, that's not what I meant by that. Um, and indicated I was gonna be recommended that we not roll over our contracts as of June 30th. We are, and I want to repeat, we're under contract for next year, this would be not doing the automatic rollover because it would be disingenuous of us if we're talking about fiscal uncertainty, but then at June 30th, we roll over, and we're all locked in for another year after that. So it's more or less putting us on the same plane as the rest of the contracts with everyone else so that if we need some flexibility, that there's, there's no groups that are off the table for discussion for that flexibility. So I've spoken to all the administrators, so their recommendation is for all of our contracts not to be rolled over for that next year, the 25, 26.
But approving this tonight isn't approving the dollar amount or that people, like, we're not doing that piece of it tonight. Okay.
I wanted, I needed to do this before then our contracts will, we, we will handle our contracts tomorrow, I'll come next month, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve not automatically rollover the extension of administrative contracts for the all district administrators beyond June 30th.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve not doing the automatic rollover of administrative contracts beyond June 30th, 2025.
Can I clarify two, two things quick, is number one is, uh, what would happen is, is that we would make a determination by next January to roll over that year. Also, I would be springing notice to all the other administrators in actually, and you would serve notice to me in a letter indicating that my contract will not roll over next year, so.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Um, item 12, legislative update. Um, luckily, they are out of session right now, but, um, I think as, as we've discussed previously, there's been redistricting. And while Nancy Bandenier is currently our Assembly Representative, and Pam Tustin is our State Senator, until January 2nd of next year, our school district is actually in new districts. One of the districts is the 87. Anyway, the person that potentially, um, could be our next representative, Representative John Spiros, who right now represents part, uh, small part of Marshfield in Tamara County, that district is now covering the majority of the Pittsville district. Representative Spiros has, um, asked to meet with the school district. And so there's a meeting scheduled for Wednesday at...
11:45.
11:45. So.
And if all of you were invited, I know some of you would have to decline because of the timing, so.
So I'm then entertaining the other retired member.
I'm not being, my doctor's...
Okay. It didn't work, not yet. Okay, so that's just F1. You'll give them a tour and, um, tell them about the need for reforming the school funding for what?
Yep.
Any other things related to legislative updates?
Just the Act 20 litigation.
You already covered, right, yep. Agenda item number 13, public comment for school board policy 187. Deb, are there any public comments?
There is not.
Okay. Um, item number 14, future agenda items.
I think we have plenty of stuff on our plate between now and November that we don't, we need.
Yeah, I did have, uh, just a couple of questions, the same time Fund 80.
Yep.
That could be leveraged for, so, like, one of them, just like in general, could, because we have the Fund 80 is funded in our childcare center, you know, and fitness center. So, and that, in theory, you could, like, up and beyond, like, a lot, right? When we approve. So if we would say, we want to have them pay for a physical trainer to serve our, our buildings here, so like, I don't know, just go have budgetings, have the money in for people that are actually members of the, um, fitness center, like, have hours here where they serve the community, and serve needs that we have, that's a pretty good for us right now with the athletics. Is that something that Fund 80, money can pay for?
As long as it funds the entire community. So that would mean anyone that would be a resident.
Yeah, well, I mean, thinking of, because I know that that's been, Chris and I actually, um, the Congress said, and then somebody that talked about some school districts that found a doctor. Just things to think about, I mean, I'm not saying that, it's even a feasible idea for us, I'm just wondering if it's possible.
Right, yeah. I mean, even, I know we haven't gotten a meeting, but even some of the potential thoughts moving forward of school social workers, if the range is bigger than just what you're doing, like, the range is to support the area, um, the community, like, what could get leverage, yeah?
Yeah, um, I, I actually, through another project that I work on, done a, a primer on Fund 80 for high students. And I, I think that as we're looking at finances, that could definitely be something that we could look into a little more.
Especially ties in with the community, but not just the school, but, so that, that, what we're considering that is looking at, you know, without, you know, athletic trends.
I want to ca, I want to caution us, just because it's not on the agenda, would get, and I absolutely would be supportive of having this future agenda. I think we'll bring something forward, I'm not trying to stop it, just saying because it wasn't on the agenda. Um, we just wanted to get through the budget process because that'll be somewhat time consuming. So once we get through the budget process with the budget proposal, and the projections, we can then work on a presentation, I think. Because I, I think you guys had already noticed that that's something we're willing to see about. Because these are all good comments to talk about, and I think we, we'll get it on the agenda.
Julie, also, um, I know you, in the past, Chris talked about grant funding. Uh, and, uh, big picture grant strategy or...
I know, it's, I mean, I've kind of got my feelers out there a little bit, I guess, still on the topic of, you know, a full-time grant writer for a school district. But maybe try to be a little bit more independent on our income. But something that, I, I, I've had ideas on both sides, I guess, but, uh, I don't, the rest of the board is interested in discussing something like that.
Well, quite frankly, I think that, you know, adding a full-time position, um, particularly with our, with our finances right now, would be something that would be a very, that would have to be looked at very, very, very carefully. I see it more as a strategy, what if we have a strategy?
I mean, the thing is, I would just, I would just, again, reiterate the fact that if you're sure, I would know that stuff.
So we got two things, Fund 80 and Grant Strategy.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Five hundred, can I get you for 60 seconds? Uh, okay.
So I have to explain only?
Yes, the people on, you gotta get them all, Pam wants to explain.
Well, I wasn't going to, but I was going to take these out because the work...